Okay, we're gonna open the June 12, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:32. We stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undergoing indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have residents' comments. Debbie, you wanted to read a statement?
Deborah Stewart, 9 Brolin Street, also Chairman of the Cemetery Commission. The Cemetery Commission would just like to put a thank you out to everybody that came out and helped out for Memorial Day. As everybody kind of found out, we were very short-staffed and we were really afraid that the cemetery would not look decent enough for Memorial Day. And we wanted to, you know, just send a couple of really special thank yous out to Steve Maglio, a friend of our superintendent's who came out, wasn't even on the payroll, donated hours and hours of his time. We had Ryan Cotton, who wasn't even on the payroll yet, is now, thank God, who came out, did some work for us, which was really helpful. Frank Byron, our superintendent, who put in numerous hours that he didn't even have to do, but he did anyways. Of course, we also want to thank our selectman, Ed Watson, who I found out came out a few days and gave us some help, too. Our community, who, everybody who came out and did their own help around their own graves. We also want to thank the Police Department, who's still coming out and keeping an eye on us and making sure everything's the way it should be. But we just really wanted to thank everybody because we thought, and we got a lot of compliments on how the cemetery ended up looking for Memorial Day, and we just really wanted to send a thank you out to the few special people, but again, the entire community that came out and stepped up when we were short-staffed. So, we just wanted to send a thank you out to them, and that's about all. So, thank you.
Was that it?
That was it. That was short and sweet. I promise, see? I know, it's not usual like me, but hey, just short and sweet.
We like that. We're gonna get out early, we like that. Okay, next up, we have the warrants. Is it, you said it's all right if I read them?
If you want to.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 1749 in the amount of $169,330.85.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve deduction warrant number 17-47A in the amount of $29,156.39.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 17-49 in the amount of $1,090,419.41.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any discussion?
Yes. It seems another high month, let me elaborate on that a bit.
Yep, so $500,000 of that is the Water Department making payments on the main Gardner Street project. $300,000 is debt payments, the large amount of which is for the Center Street land purchase. $100,000 is the Light Department bills, and then the remaining $200,000-ish are regular town bills.
Sounds good.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have appointments. Appointment of Ellen Petrillo, 9 Briscoe Road, Groveland, to the position of Town Accountant effective July 5, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The position is for 30 hours a week at a starting pay rate of $37.50 an hour, subject to a successful Corey check and annually appointed.
And I just need to make a correction, the pay rate is incorrect. It's supposed to be $39.50. Apologize for that.
Okay. So, I've read through your documents this morning. Anything else that you need to know about you? Well, Denise recommends you, so I know that she's very thorough. Denise, anything else that we should talk about, or?
I mean, I can tell you, so we had about nine people apply for the position. I interviewed six of them. Actually, Ellen was the first one I interviewed, and I would've canceled the rest of them right after the first interview. I think she interviewed very well. Her credentials are exceptional. Our auditors highly recommend her. So, in my opinion, that was enough for me. I think she'll be great here for the Town of Groveland.
Great. Anybody have questions?
You'll be leaving Raleigh total, you'll be strictly working for us?
Yes.
Did, how much notice do you have to give Raleigh? It's okay. Ed, any questions?
No, I don't.
Lisa?
So, I wasn't here before May 2. Was the process that the board took a vote and the position was posted? Is that how, how did the position get?
The current incumbent is retiring June 30.
Okay. So, did the, you prepared a job description? Did the board look at that?
And to be honest, I don't remember back that, I don't remember if.
I think it was since it wasn't a new position, it was just a replacement position, that there wasn't a new job description created?
I don't know that you did.
Anything else? Someone wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we appoint Ellen Petrillo, the position of Town Accountant effective July 5, 2017 through June 30, 2018. 30 hours a week at a starting pay rate of $39.50.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion, Bill, I know you just walked in, we're appointing Ellen for the Town Accountant position.
Oh, yeah, 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 I looked over her resume.
Did you have any initial questions?
No, she looks, what, qualified?
Yeah, this is, this is.
I don't care who you are, I just care if you can do the job. That's it. And it looks like you can, and hopefully you do a great job, and glad you're coming on board.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, the appointment of Amanda Fisher, Salisbury, Massachusetts, to the position of Outreach Worker effective June 13, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The position is for 10 hours a week budgeted and four hours a week grant-funded at a starting pay rate of $15.84 an hour, subject to successful Corey check and annually appointed. You must be Amanda. Do you wanna stand up? So, I did read some of the correspondence from Lynn. It seems like you're highly qualified as well. Been part of the, I guess, that outreach program already. Anything else you wanna?
No.
No? Nobody wants to talk tonight? Anybody have any questions? Bill, Bill, Lisa, Ed?
No, most of it.
Oh, could I ask one question?
Yep.
So, you're currently a full-time student at Salem State?
Yes.
And do you have a project in this department?
Not until my senior year, but I can work my school schedule around that. So, I go to night school, and then during the day, I can do my intern hours.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Amanda Fisher.
Amanda Fisher. I'm seconding it.
Okay. And any further discussion?
No, I was just gonna ask one question. How much intern, how long were you the intern in Salisbury? Like, how long were you?
A full year.
A full year?
Yeah, from September until June.
And did you have any other kind of criteria before this? Like, did you?
Previously, no. I did some volunteer work throughout the community. I'm currently an employee at Market Basket. I've been there for about five years.
Okay. That's all I had.
All those in favor? Congratulations. See, that was painless. You could've talked a little bit.
I was nervous.
I went to Salem State, too, so it can't be all bad. All right. So, we got about 20 minutes to kill before the public hearing. So, I'm gonna go through the correspondence. We have the minutes from May 30, 2017, the executive session minutes from May 22, 2017, the letter from Jan Vog, Library Director, not seeking extension of contract, thank you note from Dave Tuttle to the Board of Selectmen for the members who attended the Memorial Day services, Water and Sewer Department update, Library Department update, and Highway Vehicle Equipment List. Anybody have any discussion points on any of that they wanna talk about? No?
Yes.
Yep.
We got, we got the Highway Vehicle listing, still missing Water and Sewer Department and Cemetery.
I reached out to both of them. The Water and Sewer Department, he was going to assign one of his guys to work on that when I spoke to him this morning, and I think the cemetery's been a little behind catching up on some things, so.
Do they have a timeline for when they would get that?
They didn't give me one. I'd asked it for this meeting, but I will ask again.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Should we go to votes of the board, Denise?
You can. So, I didn't put any times on anything else, because if you need to take things out of order, you certainly can at this point.
Yeah. Do we have time? Probably don't have time to talk about the annual appointments, do we?
You can't take that out of order, can you? Because that's a discussion.
Let's look at votes of the board. We have the first round of year-end transfers. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
And I can certainly touch upon them if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
So, the transfers, the left column, the transfer from in red, that's where we're taking money from. The transfer to, obviously, is where we're moving it to. A lot of them are from department to department. We're just shifting line items. But the big expenses that we've had that we had to cover was, as you all know, snow and ice. We had a $93,000 deficit, and then we had two large deficits on the Police Department due to extended medical leaves for two of their employees. So, trying to cut, we had to cut enough in the other budgets to make up those deficits at this point. So, some of the items that we were able to have some savings, the police, he was able to be conservative on his other line items because he knew we was gonna need money, and the patrolman's salary line had additional money because one of our patrolmen left in March, so that fund, so we were able to transfer that. We had a small amount at Essex Tech. We transferred some out at the special town meeting. We had a little bit left that we could take out. We had a $48,000 surplus in our trash collection from going to a new trash vendor, so we were able to move that out. Our Veterans Benefits has seen a decrease in benefits that we're paying out, so we were able to take a large chunk from the Veterans Benefits line. And then you'll see all the smaller lines that we were able to cut. Again, some of them, you'll see, like, the Building Department, $250 came from one of his line items to another one of his line items. So, some of those are just adjustments along the way. The cemetery was adjusting for their utilities. The library was adjusting for the materials and so on.
So, out of that, was it $93,000 that we were short? How close did you come to?
I closed it, so.
Did you?
Yes. So, this is $144,000 worth of transfers. Again, a lot of them are line to line, so, but the true deficits was the snow and ice at $93,000, the police reserves at $27,000, and the communication for the police at $11,000. So, we covered all of those with the existing budget. If you'll recall, back in May, I sent out an email to departments, letting them know that we did have some significant deficits, and asked them not to just frivolously spend their budgets. They've all been great. Departments came to me right away and said, "I won't need this. I won't spend that." I will give you all fair warning that we will most likely, so we will have another round of transfers, most likely for the July 10 meeting. I spent some time with the fire chief this morning. His firefighter wages line is going to be over. He's not sure on the amount yet, but there's only about $1,600 left in his line item, and he, on average, pays out about anywhere between $5,000 and $15,000 a month on salaries. So, we will not know what we are short in that line until his final payroll is calculated.
Did he have any trucks go to the seven oil on fire?
He did. So, he said that, they did have staff go there, but it's actually, I don't wanna use the word, but it's actually less expensive to have someone do mutual aid because he only has a handful of people go versus staffing a full truck on a Groveland scene. But he did have employees over there.
That, that budget number you were talking about for him, does that go in this year's budget or July 10 for next year's budget, the 15?
Oh, no. So, that will be in fiscal '17, but the final payroll is in the first week of July for June. I did ask him to cancel any remaining drill and training that he has, because we can't continue to pay the next three weeks of training and cover those types of deficits, because I've really tapped every other budget. We currently have no deficit on the books. If you vote this tonight, we'll have no deficits.
Is there a surplus at all?
There is still a surplus, but again, I don't know what people are gonna need for the next three weeks. So, I've asked people to be conservative. I've met with, the Board of Health was looking to buy some recycle bins. I met with them and asked if that's something they could put off until July 1, as it's not a necessity at this point. So, we're doing things like that to see where else we can try and make sure we have some money set aside.
Can you tell me what the total fiscal year snow and ice budget was?
The budgeted amount?
Or the total amount spent, excuse me?
It was $258-ish thousand dollars.
On the, on the snow and ice, Denise, we talked before about, I know we can't do it now, but really, maybe the Finance Board can do it or whatever, lifting that line item up, because every year, we're spending about that.
We're short every year.
Every year, so, you know, it's been pretty consistent.
Right. So, actually, and I just wanna correct Lisa, it was $273,000.
What was the actual budget for it?
$165,000. So, the Finance Board is committed to several line items that they are looking to increase. As, if you'll recall, this past year's budget, we increased our Uptown Council budget, because that was something that was historically low. Snow and ice is one of them. It's been $165,000 for many, many years. And again, it's nice to be able to do that because we can be conservative with that line item, but when we're in a situation like this, that we have to find $110,000, because we transferred money at the special town meeting as well, it makes things a little more difficult. So, if we have money to put into that line, I'd rather have there be a surplus if it's not needed than have to find this kind of money, because, I mean, as you'll see, it was tight. I mean, I was calling everyone, telling them not to spend money.
The thing with the, the thing with the snow and ice is, when you come to a meeting and we're sitting here and if transfer comes in for 25, and well, maybe next week another 25, I think people watching are like, you know, we want accountability to this. At least this way here, if we have a bigger budget, can, if they don't use the money, does that money go back?
Right. So, if they don't use the money, it would be just like this. It would be money that we're transferring out of to cover another deficit. Yep.
But it would be in there as a budgetary item, given the, you know, who knows whether we're gonna have it any given winter.
Correct. So, I think Finance is trying to figure out what they, they were saying that they're gonna look back at three or five years' worth of spending to figure out some of these accounts and what they'd like to see as a budgeted number, so that, you know, we're not going too high and then getting into a situation that we don't have it elsewhere.
Right. And then, and another thing is, is we're increasing roads in Groveland. We're adding more roads every year, and since I've been here, the three, or three, four years I've been here, we've added more roads, but the budget's never changed.
Correct.
So, we're just gonna, we're gonna consistently be shot every year. I think we really need to adjust that number.
So, last year, we spent actual $273. Do you happen to know what was the previous year, roughly?
I don't remember what we spent the previous year.
I don't think it was that high.
I would actually be interested in getting maybe historical of the, like, the last five years, what we spent on snow and ice, if that's possible.
And did that, the, the, the price for the snow removal at the school, was that part of snow and ice, too, or is that something separate?
Yeah. So, the snow, the roof removal cleaning was part of snow and ice, but that was in?
Those two years?
15.
15.
Fiscal 15.
So, that was the big expense that year? And I'm wondering?
Yes. So, fiscal '16, we had a lighter year, I believe. '15 was a bad winter anyways. '15, we were, we were still over, but not by a lot. And then this year, if you recall, it wasn't as much the snow, it was the ice. We had a very icy and cold winter. And that's what takes more manpower is actually sanding the roads.
Any other questions on the year-end transfers? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them.
You get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I just wanna say Denise, that was a great job. I know you spent a lot of time on that. That wasn't easy to do, nickel and diamond things here.
Thank you. And really, I thank the departments who have been working with me on this.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? All right. We got a few minutes, minutes from May 15, 2017. Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept those. They seem to be in order.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Then we have $2,365,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2017 bonds. Can you elaborate on that?
Yep. So, this is, last year, at the same time, we temporarily financed some bonding items. The way I historically borrow is I don't like to borrow every year. We can temporarily finance it for one year and then borrow it the following year, so we can lump purposes together and save money on issuance costs. So, this bond authorization covers the $1.5 million Water Main replacement for Main and Gardner Street, $750,000 for the ladder truck, and the $160,000 from the police dispatch, which was the previous year. So, our one-year temporary ban is up, and now we are going to, well, we actually went to the market this past Monday, at last Monday. We actually got a great rate. I had a rating agency call with Standard and Poor's two weeks ago, and they have affirmed us the second highest rating possible, a double A plus. So, they have cited our strong financials, strong cash reserves. They would like to see more set policies in terms of the financials. So, I've actually spoken with Kathy Castrenellis at the Finance Board. That's something they wanna start working on, a formalized reserve policy. They have an informal one that they'd like to see at 10%, but we need to get something more finalized. So, once we get a few more of those policies formalized, we very well could look at the highest rating possible as a triple A, because we are really just under that at a double A plus. So, because we had such a great rating, we had a good interest rate come through, and so this is for the 20 years borrowing on those three purposes.
Where was that on the agenda?
Vote to the board.
I had sent out a supplemental email, Lisa, on Thursday, and then it was in the final agenda.
What was the interest rate?
The, the total, it's like 2.8, I think.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yes.
Someone make a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion that we approve the $2,365,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 217 bonds.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Lisa, you're right. All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? We've got six minutes.
And I just wanna, as I mentioned in the emails, there's a ton of paperwork for these bonds that will need to be signed by a majority of all of you, so don't leave tonight till you sign them all, because they have to be overnighted tomorrow to our council.
Denise, how much time do you need for Finance to work this time?
I just have one item.
All right, let's go with that.
And it's actually very quick. I sent an email to this board and several other boards and committees on Thursday, I think of last week, that on Thursday, June 29, at 7 o'clock here in this room, Merrimack Valley Planning is hosting a housing community needs assessment workshop. They have been working on a regional housing plan for the Merrimack Valley. We are one of the last communities to have their needs assessment. I met with them last Wednesday. We went over who the stakeholders would be, and sort of set the groundwork for their hour-long workshop, that they will be here collecting data. If people cannot make it to that meeting and would like to participate, it's on our website. There's an online link. You can go on and enter in any comments. The community needs the housing. It's not just affordable housing. It covers senior housing as well, multifamily versus single family. So, it's a very thorough plan, and then at the end of it, they are doing, at no cost to us, we will receive our own housing plan that we can file for if we need grants or to go forward with affordable housing or anything like that. So, Thursday, June 29, at 7 o'clock. And that's the only item I have for you.
Okay.
You know, I had the email, it doesn't have an attachment to it.
It was on the body, did you?
Do you have a question, Bill?
The, was there an attachment to that? Just an email?
No, it was just an email. It went up to there in the final agenda.
Let's see. Well, I don't know if we should start selectman time or old business or just wait.
Selectman's time's probably easier. I want to just get a few out of the way. We still have it for you.
Yeah. Let's go to selectman time. Bill and Neil, do you have anything for selectman time?
The Begno project has, they drove by there today. Does that, any updates on where that's going or how that's going?
Well, I met.
It might take more than, it might take more than three minutes, but we can start. Go ahead.
I met with a group of, a group of people last night at 5 o'clock. It was headed up by Beth Heller. They were, just wanted a discussion on where the project's going and where it's being, and what have you. Some people were complaining the grass isn't growing well enough. I assured them and told them what was going on and what we've done. I have all the emails to back it up. They may wanna be having a group of people possibly to do, you know, some.
Oversee?
Volunteering time down there. And we talked about it, and what I was trying to do within the conversation is I was saying, well, maybe we could have the volunteers go down and do the weeding of the ball fields, do some weeding, spread some mulch, maybe put some fencing in to try and save some money, so we could hut off the side of the parking area. I think coming out of the meeting, they're, they're, we're on the assumption, you know, if we got this money appropriated, why don't we use the money to finish the project? So, at the end of the meeting, they've gone off. They're gonna try and either form a committee talk, and then we'll be hearing back from them. And I think I just heard you say something about overseeding?
Oversee? No, oversee.
Oversee, okay, yeah. I don't know where it ended up. I haven't heard back. They were gonna go back and, you know, talk, get a committee, whatever they're gonna do and get back to me. I think this, Beth Heller was gonna send an email out to the people that were interested, and she's the one that actually had called through my, through my company website to have me answer, because I don't have Facebook. So, I answered her back, and then she asked would I meet her down there at 5 o'clock? I said, sure. I said, she said, I may have some people. I said, yeah, it's fine. So, I went down there last night at 5 o'clock and met there at 6 o'clock.
So, this is probably more old business.
Old business.
And then even after that's probably gonna be an agenda item for the next meeting, depending on how deep we get into this. So, I have 7 o'clock on my computer, so. Yeah, well, we can revisit it when we go to old business, yeah. And then, depending on how deep we get into it, we might have to actually make an agenda item for the next meeting. So, 7 o'clock, got to open public hearing, renewal of Water Commissioners permit for earth removal activities on property located on Zachary, Zachary Lane, Groveland, Massachusetts. See, Chair must open the public hearing at 7 and should ask for a motion to open the hearing and take a roll call vote accordingly. Once opened, the advertised hearing must, notice must be read aloud. So, can I get a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion, we open the hearing.
You get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call, Ed? Lisa? Bill and Neil?
Yes.
Phil Dunn?
Yes.
Mike Wood, yes. Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 12, 2017 at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room, Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on the application of the Town of Groveland Water Commissioners for a permit renewal for earth removal activities on property located on Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass, as shown on Assessor's Map 33, Parcel 6 and 10. on property located on Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass., as shown on Assessor's Map thirty-three, parcel six, and ten. Copy of the plan are on file in the Town Clerk's office and are available for viewing Monday through Thursday, nine A M. to four thirty P M., and Monday evenings from six P M. to eight P M., Groveland Board of Selectmen. I now invite the Water and Sewer to come up.
Tom Cusick, I'm the Superintendent for Groveland Water and Sewer.
Jim Sheen, Groveland Water and Sewer. So we're not actually officially overseers of the project, that's something that I think you probably have a letter from the Road Commissioner-
Right.
-on that. As far as I know, the project is, is ahead of schedule by-
About a year and a half.
A year and a half.
Oh, good.
So I do go out there periodically, and everything that I've been seeing's been very professional. They've been working through their grids as they're supposed to, and putting the proper topsoil. I don't know what, you know, the plot is put together for a report for you, I did not read it.
But it's been pretty consistent over the years? I mean, this is up for renewal, so there is no issue with renewing it from your eyes?
From what I see, yeah, I've been there myself.
Okay.
It hasn't changed, he's doing a great job. He's overseed, he's doing what he's supposed to.
Okay.
We're happy.
Anybody have any questions?
When do you think it'll be, it'll be ended?
Well, it's coming September.
I'm thinking this year, probably November.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe this time next year. It's taking a little while.
Anybody else? Billy, you okay?
Yeah.
Ed?
No, I'm alright.
Lisa? Someone want to make a motion?
Mike, I think Mike has.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Mike Dempsey, representing Groveland Conservation. So I would agree with what the Water Department says. This land is controlled by Conservation, so we try to go out there every two or three months. We're out there today, and the contractor does a good job of avoiding the wetland areas, and just runs a clean operation, so we're happy about that. The last decision that we need to make is what's going to be planted in the areas where the gravel has been removed. So we are currently working on that. There, there are some things said in the original permit for what was requested to be planted there, but we believe that we want to avoid putting trees in and try to keep it as much an open field as possible. So we're researching that a little bit. We are looking for some input from the Natural Heritage Program and see what they want to say as far as habitat concerns are. So we'll be working on that, hopefully get something together over the next couple of months. So I'd recommend that you renew the permit too.
Did anybody else want to make a comment on that?
No, just, just a, just a question. It had to do much to do with the permit. But early in the spring, mid-spring, there was, just inside the gate off the Center Street to the left, there was a large accumulation of snow.
Which gate? The first gate, when you come in outside?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right on the left-hand side, you went to that gate, with a large accumulation of snow. Was that, was that just scraped off of the roadway going in?
Probably. Probably just-
Nothing we put there, I let it off. It piled off the road.
Yeah, off the, yeah, it probably just, you know, when they piled the road, they probably pushed it up there.
Yeah, it just, it just seemed like it was, it was, everything else had melted except the-
Oh, yeah.
Big pile inside the gate.
Pretty, you know, pretty long road, so you've got-
And it shaded in that area too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So may I ask a question then, so Mike, to your comments, so in the permit, item numbers seven and eight talks about rye grass being seeded and then fingerling firs being, or other approved trees. Do you want that to stay in there, or should we change that wording based on what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I would remove those things and say, per recommendation from the Conservation Commission, something to that effect.
So then our motion needs to include that language?
Yes, and then, so either way, you'll have a revised permit for your next meeting to sign off on?
Yeah.
But if you make any changes, I have to incorporate those, so I just, because it does mention trees, I just wanted to make sure.
So that's item seven and eight under decisions.
So you said the grass has already been planted, so we can leave seven, or?
Yeah, I would think you'd want grass.
Yeah.
So we just want to remove the trees?
You can remove rye grass, and that's the part that we may change more tightly.
Okay.
Did you already plant the rye grass?
No, I haven't. You haven't put seed down. It's already coming up, and I don't know whether it's best to do or what.
So what are you asking, Mike, are you asking them to reseed with your-
No, no. We may recommend a different kind of grass on the whole thing, but it isn't gonna-
In five years, that'll be a forest.
Well-
Naturally.
No, but we'll have to take care of it somehow, so we'll be coming for it.
That's just, the same, the same loom is going down, so we put the same seeds in there. It's gonna just turn to, you know, a forest, like it is now, you see the rest of the pit, how much it's grown?
Someone has to keep a field mode or something to keep it down.
Oh, and that, yeah, that's what you want to do, you want it for a field.
So Mike, what do you want in our-
So, if, how does, if we remove items seven and eight, which identifies the grass and the fir trees, and just have it state, grass implantings will be based on a recommendation of the Conservation Commission, does that work for everybody?
They're happy with it.
Alright, does someone want to make a motion with that amendment in it?
Make a motion, we amend- Section seven and eight under decisions to read grass and other-
Grass implantings will be based on a recommendation of the Conservation Commission.
There you go.
You get a second? Any further discussion?
So your recommendation is just to amend these right now, correct? And then you'll-
Number seven and eight.
Okay, so then you still have to vote on the whole permit.
Right, okay. So we're voting to amend seven and eight?
Yes.
No further discussion, all those in favor? Now can we get a motion to approve the permit?
Make a motion, we approve the permit. Water, Water Commissioners' permit for earth removal activities on property located on Blackwing Lane.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
No, no, no issue with the neighbors, right? I mean- Just wondering, I haven't heard any of this, so.
Alright, we go roll call, Ed?
Yes.
Lisa? Bill Dunn?
Yes.
Bill O'Neill?
Yes.
Mike Wood, yes? All set?
Thank you.
Yep. We have to roll call out of the session, right? Public hearing. Is it the motion, Ed?
Yes.
You get a motion to exit public hearing?
I'll make a motion in two seconds, to the exit public hearing.
You get a second?
Second.
Alright, we go roll call, Bill O'Neill?
Yes.
Bill Dunn?
Yes.
Lisa? Ed?
Yes.
Mike Wood, yes? Seven-ten, right on time. Mr. Capel.
That's rare.
Let's see, discussion, the upcoming season of the summer program. Thank you.
Here you go, Matt, thanks.
So good evening, it's nice to see everyone and be back for another year. We've been busy planning for what hopefully will be another fun-filled summer program at the Bagnell School this year. We already had our staff orientation last week. We do have about half of our staff as being new this year, so that's, that's big for us. We haven't had that many stu-, new staff members in a couple of years. So we worked really hard last week getting everyone acquainted, doing the get-to-know-you's, going over our policies and procedures, and it looks like that we'll have another great staff this summer. So in your packet that I provided with you, the first couple of pages is this year's brochure that went out to parents and families this year at the Bagnell, and then also this information is available on our website. So the first page talks about a couple of differences that we are making this summer as far as what my role is, and I know we, we had talked about that in the past. You know, I'm continuing to, to be in charge with the, the planning and kind of the behind-the-scenes operation of, of the summer program this year. Unfortunately, Mrs. Lisa Stevens, who's been our Assistant Director for twelve or thirteen years, needs to take the summer off due to personal reasons. So we have put together an onsite administrative team that will be rotating, but they are familiar faces to the program. All three of them have worked for the program for many years. Two are licensed teachers during the school year, and the ser-, the third is a current police officer. All three, again, have worked for the program for many years. You see that our tuition is on the right side of that page. I worked really hard at either being able to keep the tuition where it was last year, or even lower it, and we were able to, to lower the tuition just a bit for families for this year, which I'm really excited about.
How much did it go down, roughly?
It went down, for the, all seven weeks, it went down just under a hundred dollars.
That's great.
So we had a little money left over from last year, which I was really happy about, you know, with some of the, the changes we needed to make financially. We were able to still have offer quality program and also have some money left over, which was good.
So you, you lowered the tuition, and you're back to nine field trips?
Correct.
And I will say, we did offer a few financial assistance this year to some families.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, which was, which was great, we were able to offer some scholarships for needy families, which that's the first time that we've ever done that.
Were those towards Groveland residents, or were those-
Yes, Groveland residents only, yep. The next page talks about our counselor in training program, which we've done for many years. And again, I'm very happy that a lot of our new staff, this year especially, some of our new counselors have been CIT's counselors in training with us for several years. You see that our field trips are on that sheet, and as Mr. Wood did state, this year we're, we're back up to our nine field trips, which is great. We did reduce back to seven last year, just because we weren't sure again with the finances. But again, having that money left over and really working hard and making a few adjustments to the budget, we're able to bring back the nine field trips, which I know the kids are already excited about. The next couple of pages just talk about our enrollment dates, and then our option for P M. extended day for working families. The next page is our staff pay rate list for two thousand seventeen. I did do a comparison from last year to this year, so that's why there's some crossing out. So any names that are crossed out were staff last year but will not be back this year or have changed positions. And one of the major pieces that I do want to bring to your attention, and I talked to Denise about this before making the change, and I believe she ran it by you guys, was that we are going up to minimum wage for our staff members. Last year, we, we were below minimum wage, and I really felt that, that the kids deserved to be, to be at least paid minimum wage as, you know, they could get a job somewhere here in the state and then get paid minimum wage. And we really do have, have a great staff, and we're financed, we're able to do that. So at the bottom of the second page of the staff pay rate, at the way bottom on the left, the amount you see, nine ninety-five equals eleven seventy-five, nine sixty-nine equals eleven fifty, nine forty-four equals eleven twenty-five. That's how I broke down our returning staff. So those staff members that got paid nine ninety-five in our last year were the staff members, the counselors that have been around the longest. So this year, they're now getting paid eleven seventy-five, and so on. And then our new counselors that are hired this year are getting paid eleven dollars.
I didn't, sorry, anyone else?
No, no problem, go.
I didn't see anywhere where it shows the number of people or kids registered this year. Do you have that?
Yes, I, if you go, I don't have the exact number right now, but if you go into the budget portion-
Yeah.
You see in the bottom center, the two thousand seventeen anticipated.
Okay.
And those numbers, right now, we're, we're pretty much just a little under those numbers because those anticipated numbers are actually just updated. So to get those numbers, I looked at, since we're already, you know, almost into the middle of June, those numbers will be pretty accurate. We will still have a few additions, but if you look at the two thousand seventeen anticipated, that will give you a pretty close idea to where we're at.
So it looks like about a hundred and fifty total?
Right now, yeah.
Is that, you said it was a little lower than last year so far?
Yes.
Wow, surprising where the, the rates are lower and the field trips are low.
Yeah.
You'll probably get some people signing up.
We always get a lot of last minute, you know, summer's here, what do I do with my kids?
Give them the map.
Well, that, and there still is, and I've heard it, that there's a misunderstanding that it's similar to what it was last year, where they've cut down, and I said, you know, I'm trying to let people know in the streets that know it's, it's back to the way it was, fun time all the time.
Yeah, unfortunately, I did, I did have, yield a lot of questions regarding, you know, what happened in the past year or so, and I, I do feel that that notion, for whatever reason, is still out on the street. So I've been working hard too at, you know, letting people understand that.
Yeah, I think it might be a one-year hiccup, once the kids get back from camping, you know, on a daily basis, and you'll, you'll see the numbers rebound next year, I'm pretty sure.
But even at one fifty, that's not considerably lower, right? Compared to other years?
Two years ago, we were, we were in the mid-to-high teens.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm sure that the population has something to do with that too, with the number of kids that are at the school and kids graduating to the seventh grade, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it fluctuates a little bit, yeah. Yeah. And then the next page is just a summary of our budget. So I, I put on there for you what I budgeted last year, what the actual cost for two thousand sixteen was, and then our anticipated cost for two thousand seventeen. On the left side are all the, the non-payroll items, such as our, our sports equipment, our arts and craft supplies, our field trips, our busing, and so on. And then the payroll is on the right side. A couple of changes is I combined the enrichment computer lab positions this year, so that's going to be one person. So that is saving us a little bit of money. That's one of the major changes, and then as I stated, having the rotation of the three onsite directors. And the final few pages, just as an FYI, you see the administrators that will be onsite each day from start to finish. So you have that knowledge, and then something that we spoke about previously is you have, when I will be offering parent office hours each week. So I will be onsite on those particular days for that amount of time, plus I will be there onsite on a second day each week, which will be- which will be in the parent information packet, which will be going out at the beginning of next week, which I'll be happy to email you a copy. So, the names that you see on the calendar is the onsite administrator or administrators. Some of the, the bigger field trip, field trips will have two onsite administrators working on those days just for the extra support and the extra safety for the kids. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm good. Bill?
Are we missing a week, Matt? I've got six twenty-six to seven one. The next page goes seven nine to seven fifteen.
Yep, and then there should be seven twenty-four to seven twenty-eight.
So, in between seven two and, in between seven two and seven, no, July?
Yeah, I think you missed in two weeks.
Hope they did not print right. The July fourth week.
The July.
Is this a repetitive schedule? So, it doesn't matter what the week is?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty much Annie is working, Annie Kalashin is working Monday, Wednesday, Thursdays. Ashley's working Tuesdays, Ashley Cummings, and Ryan Paner is working Fridays, and then he's working some of the Thursday field trip days as well. But I'm sorry, that must have been a coffee machine error. I will, I'll make sure I get the full calendar to you.
I just wanted to make sure that we're still camped on it. So, two thousand seventeen at the bottom left of your budget summary. You're anticipating throwing off almost eleven thousand dollars in cash at the end of the program?
I'm sorry?
You're anticipating throwing off almost eleven thousand dollars in cash at the end of the program? If I look at the bottom right-hand corner of your budget summary.
In the bottom-left corner, the difference.
Yeah.
Right now, based on what I've calculated for staffing and our anticipated costs and based on the, the anticipated enrollment, yes.
Is it possible you could run a class and try to teach some of the other departments? Maybe have to throw off this kind of cash every year? We could use it.
But again, that, you know, that helped us, having that, you know, that amount from last year, that helped us be able to offer some scholarships to some Groveland families this year. So, that, you know, that money left over can be used, you know, towards scholarships for next year.
Yeah, but it's a, again, that's a good thing. They were helping the folks in Groveland out that otherwise would be stuck. That's not a bad thing.
Sure. Um, last year was tough with the, you know, the, the fields, but we did make the best of it. We did be able to use part of the fields for, for part of the summer. And then that cleared area to the left of the playground of the school and the way back, we use that space. And then the front parking lot, we don't have anyone park in that lot. So, the kids like to do street hockey, soccer, kickball, so we use that space as well.
It might be a little challenged this year too in the backyard.
Ed, any questions?
Uh, no. The presentation, I like the way I was, like the way I was laid out for it. Sorry, I'm.
Thank you.
Lisa, your turn? Great job.
Okay.
I like the, the lower rates and the more trips and, and have the surplus at the end.
Yeah, and one, one thing again that I'm really proud of is being able to offer, you know, those scholarships to some Groveland families.
Definitely.
So, you know, something that, that I'm happy about and, you know, that, that we were able to do that, so, thank you very much.
Good job. Listen up, you need to.
Matt, one quick thing. So, will you give me a final staff list so that the board can appoint them at their next meeting?
Sure. Yep, I will have that for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I do.
So, we have to wait till seven forty for the appointments, right? So, we can go to.
Okay, to finish select this time, I can go back.
So, anything for select time?
Um, not really.
Yes, kind of. Kind of. Or a bit under old business. Well, you have anything for select time? We got fifteen minutes.
Well, we're just talking about what we're talking about. I don't know if you want to carry on about that at all, but.
Well, that'll be under old business.
Okay. No, I'm good.
Lisa, select time? Ed, select time?
No, nothing under select time.
Um, yeah, might even fall under old business too. All right, so, let's go to old business. Is there anything, Ed, that's not related to Bagnell Schools? We can talk about that after.
I don't believe so. I think it, I, I think I covered that earlier when I asked for the update on the water department, sewer department trucks and the cemetery.
Okay. Lisa, anything not related to Bagnell Schools? So, that's going to take up more than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I would like to find out about the upcoming projects. So, there might be certain constituencies that right now it's pretty difficult to manage to be over. And just if we have anticipated completion dates for some of the others that are being completed.
I think Main Street is scheduled for July at this time. Are you talking about Route ninety-seven? That's a state project. Any idea what?
I don't know an update on that, actually. I do know Gardner Main is ahead of schedule, and they are looking to wrap it, wrap it up in, yes, July.
Right. Governor's Road, I think they were still doing the water means.
No, I think Governor's Road is, is pretty much, I don't know, we just talked about that. I think they're pretty good on Governor's Road, and then it just comes down to the, the paving. And I do, Bill, just to touch on, you had asked on Main Street on the paving. I did speak with the water department and the highway department. What they plan to do is they will pave the trench up to the surface layer and then let that set through the winter, and then they'll do the full paving. They'll do the grading and paving. But that, those trenches will be filled up back to the street level. So, there won't be any.
So, it'll be piecemeal until it settles.
They'll let it settle through the winter, and then they'll do the full repaving and grading.
I think Tom said that they don't do that, then there's risk of it sinking and having to do it again.
Yes.
But once they do that, will it settle again?
No, that's why they let it settle, I guess. They let it settle and then they grade and pave over that, the whole thing from start to finish.
All right, so, there's already these trenches. They're going to pave over that, make it level. Then it's going to sink through the winter, settle.
It may and it may not.
Right.
When they put those pipes and they use a special compaction machine and they compact it with an excavator with a compaction unit on it, and what, what she's saying is the road here is here now, they're just going to fill it in level in case during the winter something settles. That's why he doesn't want to pave it. And did I read an email from the highway that the highway's going to be responsible for paving it, not the water? The water's going to bring it back up to where they got it.
No, it's covered under the contract, but we're not sure if we're going to use the town paving bid or if they're going to use the contractor's paving. Our price is much better than any price that contractor can do, but there's money in the water contract to cover that.
So, it's more of a security thing, I think, was what they're doing. When we go down, when they're done in July, that will be smooth, and then something settles or whatever. Then it could be fixed in the spring thing.
Because right now, that, that's a seriously dangerous road. Somebody's going to get seriously injured and not killed.
Nothing else that keeps people from speeding.
Well, well, no, it doesn't, because what I've experienced is people come onto your side of the road to avoid those trenches, and I've avoided more than once a head-on collision just, you know, people trying to get out of that, that, that road. So, it, you know, ASAP on that kind of project, it's just, it's dangerous.
That was particularly bad after the, the heavy rain. And it was like a minefield. I think, I think they need to be a little more proactive in filling those holes. There was some vehicles damaged, some, I know, at least one person had their tailpipe ripped out. And those holes, some of those holes were a foot deep and maybe more.
Yeah, I left here one night at nine thirty, and they were actually out there filling those on the day after it had that heavy rain. So, they were paving once a week, but he had them go out that very next day after they were able to smooth some of those because it was just washing the gravel right out of the road.
Right.
I think one, one night when I went by, the, the water department themselves were out there filling some of the holes.
Yeah.
And I mean, that should be up to the contractor to be, to be doing that.
Yes, I agree, but I think the contractor is not quite local, only like the management is local. Their staff is quite a distance away. So, the staff actually, the time I saw them, it was the, like, a higher up in the company was running the bulldozer in the road because his staff isn't that close by to calling an emergency. But they were, they are working on that, and now they know that, that kind of issue happened, so they were paving on a quicker basis, those side trenches.
They have these things called hotels now that, you know. But it, it is dangerous.
So, Lisa, do you want me to get an update? Are those all the roads?
Well, I was just showing her the project list that was in the agenda packet.
Okay.
The ninety-seven project, the Gardner Street, Governor's Road. I think that was it, but.
Yeah, ninety-seven is like, it is the state. We do get updates. I can certainly talk to the road commissioner to see what the latest update was. But I know we get a lot of complaints. I know the, the rain really did a tough job on that. Unfortunately, it's not us. It is state contractors doing that job.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa? Bill, done? Anything other than the Bagnell?
Well, I mean, that road ninety-seven is a state road, but I can tell you from experience what they're going to do is they're going to do probably, what, a half a mile, a mile stretch, grind it, grade it. Then they're going to pave that section, they'll do another, and it's going to go all the way down to Carlita. So, it's going to go on for a while, you know, and have to put up with it. And hopefully get the contractor to get the spot holes filled and take care of them. It's like anything else, it's going to, it's going to have to be in disarray to get something decent at the end.
Actually, departmental updates that we discussed at the last meeting. Any status update on getting departmental updates?
So, the only ones I've gotten so far are in your correspondence. It was the water department and the library.
Okay.
I know the police, the deputy chief has been, he was in training a few days last week, so I actually didn't have a chance to follow up with him. And the road commissioner, they have been out in full force working on different projects. So, he came in just for a brief period today, but I will follow up with both of them.
Okay. Phil O'Neil, anything other than Bagnell at this point for old business?
No, not at this point.
Okay. I had a couple of things. So, I did meet with Senator Tar about the, the project in the center of town for the gas station post office.
Did you meet with him second time?
Uh, I talked to him briefly at Chief Gillen's swearing-in. So, he said that there may be some options for grants or other monies available. I did get a call from his assistant to try and schedule a meeting for myself, probably another board member, and probably Denise to go into Boston to talk to several different commissions about what we want to do with the downtown. I did get a copy of the square planning proposal from two thousand fifteen. I think Mike, you probably have seen this. So, I'm waiting for his assistant to get back with me on possible dates, and then from there, we'll see who can go down, meet with them, see what they have for options for us, and then we can decide what's best for Groveland and as far as the project goes, what's best for the downtown. On top of that, I did talk to him briefly about the senior senator that we're looking to do in town. It's been a project or an idea for quite some time. He said that there may be some options for that as well. We're going to try and piggyback the conversation about the downtown options with options for grants or low-interest loan, low-interest loans for the senior center. I don't know what will be available at this point, but we'll try to have that discussion on the same day. And then I did talk to, can I talk about the library director?
Sure.
About her not renewing her appointment for her position and what that would take. I met with her the other day. So, the board of trustees will have to nominate her for a one-month position. We will then have to appoint her, and then I guess there'll be some kind of interim director after that until we can find a new replacement. I guess that's how it would work.
I think when I met with Lee Thomas, that's what they're planning at this point is to advertise the position, but in the unlikely event that they don't have somebody available to start by the end of July, he said they would look to have an interim, possibly a current staff member, but they weren't sure on that.
Right.
In the past, they've used a temp to, there's a combination of the Bagnell temporary directors.
Yeah, I don't know that they wanted to go that route. I don't think they were pleased the last time we had a temp from the temp agency.
Was she here six months?
No, no, no. The temp was a gentleman. He was here, I don't know how many months, but they weren't overly pleased. In my opinion too, I think we, we spent a lot of money to the temp agency and did not get the type of return we were expecting.
So, that's a little bit of a project to make sure that we have coverage for her until the end of July, an appointment to her for the end of July, and then who's going to backfill that, so.
There seems to be high turnover there. Is, is there a reason? I mean, it seems like in.
Well, we don't pay, our, our, our library director is one of the lowest-paying in the area. So, it tends to be a job that is generally a stepping stone for people moving on to other things. Or in this scenario, I believe the director wasn't looking for a permanent position. I think she's moving to California or something like that.
Her words to me were she's more of a.
Fixing.
Emergency management fixer. She comes in, fixes situational libraries, props them up, gets them operating functionally again, and then she goes on to a new place and does the same thing. So, she's like a female for libraries.
I remember talking to her last year. She was very excited about the opportunity. And I don't know about the money, because when I, when I asked the question, they advertised a salary for the position, and they did get a number of applicants, so.
Right.
Right, but the problem is that having been on the board and hired, I was part of hiring at least one of the directors. They still have, there's certain qualifications. You have to have the masters in library science, and sometimes people applying don't have all the qualifications. And then I think if you compare us to other towns locally, we are, like, as I said, we had one director who was a first-time director. And they did, at the end of the day, she's no longer a director, and that isn't the, the route that she's pursued. And then we had another director that went to end the, the last board of library commissioners. That was an upward job. I, I just think it's a hard position to fill because.
Are the towns have the same turnover? Do you know?
I don't know.
We should ask Meremack and Wes Newberry if they have.
Wes Newberry just hired a new director in the past few years because theirs retired.
But she's been there for a couple of years already?
I think she's been there for a few years.
It seems like we only get people to stay for a year, year and a half to at least.
Yeah, if that, and then we'll off, off the new search.
But we're definitely lower salary than, for instance, Wes Newberry. By quote unquote, I would say.
Well, maybe we can get the trustees at the minute and talk to us about their search and.
I think they formed a search committee because Ed is part of that. So, I know that, I don't know how actively you're meeting or if you're meeting often yet, Ed, but.
We'll meet, we should be meeting this, this week, fifteen. I know they've done some applicants.
So, they've posted the position?
Yes.
For the same salary?
Um, it was including a two percent increase for July one. So, I believe the salary is sixty-two and change.
Yeah. And do you know what the other towns are?
I don't. I can certainly get a salary survey if you'd like.
I probably have that from the last time. I mean, the numbers might have changed, but probably the differences are pretty commensurate if you're interested.
If that's the problem, if that's what the problem supposedly is, if we're having a salary problem, I think we really should be proactive, and we should go around and see what around us is paying for a library director and see if we're below. If that's true, then we need to adjust, adjust it or do something because we are going through directors a lot, so it's a problem.
It'd be nice to have some continuity and stability.
If this person was a fixer, that's why she's leaving because she was a fixing.
And she, she actually, she, she did a good job. She did her job. She got, got everything back straight and all.
Well, their criteria is all back, I heard, right? Their, their state.
Certifications.
Accreditation, yep.
Yeah. Now, we just need to somebody to sit in that seat for a few years.
I think that's something that maybe when the finance board comes in, we should talk to them. I think that's something that maybe, uh, when the, uh, finance board comes in, we should talk to them about, um, maybe, uh, looking to raise the salary.
Only if it's, only if it's out of line with everybody else, but if it's in line, there's no reason to, to increase it, then we have to look at another reason. It's, it's probably just not salary. It's just other factors.
Yeah, if we can get a salary survey, then we can make that determination.
Yeah, give us a better idea.
All right, seven forty-one, we can go to annual appointments. We can go back to Selectman, uh.
Yeah, you can certainly finish old business if you want. You don't have to start at the right time. You could just have to, you can't be early. So it's up to you if you wanna finish old business and then go, or however you wanna do it.
Um, let's do the appointments and then we'll go back to old business, 'cause I know we just wanna have a rough discussion on the, the bag mail school, and which I'm sure is gonna turn into an agenda item for the next meeting. Um, so annual appointments.
So I printed off, I gave you all a most recent one, 'cause we did have some, um, people contact us since I sent out the agenda on Thursday. Um, just so you can tell the color codes, um, anything yellow is a vacancy on a board currently.
Ouch.
Excuse me, yes. Um, so we did send out back in, um, May, I sent out notices to all of, um, incumbents on all of our boards and committees who are up for reappointment and asked them if they would like to seek reappointment. So in the far right column, you'll see, um, the people that have replied or not replied. Um, I know there was some comment at one of the earlier May meetings that if we didn't hear from people, um, then the board would consider whether or not they want to reappoint them. Um.
Tracy Guilford's ready here.
I know, and I never heard back from you, Tracy.
No.
Is it, is it possible that on, on some of these with no reply, that it, uh, could you, I know you sent it out, uh, to, to email to everybody. Is it possible that some of these email addresses may not be any good anymore?
Um, so not that I know of, because we've actively communicated on other topics. Um, there are some, as you'll notice, that we don't have any address, any emails. We don't have sort of contact information on some people. Um, so.
Then there's blanks on it.
Can anybody get, get sent a, uh, a letter?
I'm sorry, did anyone get sent a letter?
Did anybody get sent a letter?
Um, Cassandra had sent a, um, uh, or Cassandra had researched the people that we couldn't find and sent follow-up. Uh, most of them were email. She was able to get an email address and send out correspondence, and we've heard from, um, I believe the handful that she was trying to track down.
On the zoning board of appeals, was that the guy who was appointed that year? Was it Jason Norman?
He's, yes, he was, I believe, filling a vacant term.
Right, and you haven't heard back from him? No, that was last.
No, it was, um, when Mark McCabe resigned, I believe, Jason filled in.
October or September or something.
Yeah, um, so no, we did not hear back from him. So, I mean, you could certainly, you know, we can still do appointments at the next meeting as well, so we can try to reach out again to these people.
Yeah.
Um, who didn't reply before you, before we post that there's vacancies on all these boards.
Yeah, do you think we can hear back from Tracy?
He just said yes, so I, I've made him a yes. Um, obviously, boards like the affordable housing, we are down to one person. Everyone else has said they do not want to seek reappointment on that. So there are some that we will have to actively, um, pursue membership for.
Mm-huh.
Um, but.
Uh, could you, could you, uh, go, go through this and, and, and give us insight on, uh, who chose not to be reappointed? Any?
Yes. No, I took the people off. Right, I took the people off because I didn't want them on the reappointment list. Um, so I can tell you, 'cause I have them here. And I have copies. If anyone wants to see where they checked off yes, I just didn't wanna print all of these, um, for everybody. So the first one is, so Alex Johnson, he was on our open space. Uh, he's actually moved. He passed papers on his house this past week, so he is, um, not seeking reappointment. Um, Jonathan Perkins was on our, uh, finance board and planning board. He did not seek reelection on planning, and he is now off the finance board. He also is moving. He's relocating to Ohio for a job. Um, Erin Merrill has resigned from all boards. It was effective immediately on May seventeen. She did not give any reason other than she's resigning from all boards.
I don't remember seeing that paperwork.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah, well, it's just part of, it was part of the reappointments, so it hurt. She was staying on and then she chose not to be reappointed. Um, Tess Bomberger from the Affordable Housing Committee just stated she would not like to be reappointed. Um, Bob Gupta, as he is planning to move.
We should keep him on anyways.
Well, I sent him that email for the community needs. I said, oh, you're still a board member until June thirtieth, you can come back. So, um, he has said he does not wanna seek reappointment.
He's moving.
South Carolina, is that right?
Yes, South Carolina.
We should send correspondence anyways.
And how many was he on?
He was on open space, community preservation, cemetery, affordable housing. Um, Bruce Adams, who is not a resident any longer, but was staying on affordable housing, um, until they could get an active committee. He has chosen not to be reappointed. Um, he is willing to assist, um, with that and stormwater management if we need assistance, 'cause he was active with both of those committees. But he does not wanna be a member. Um, and Beth Rose from the cable TV advisory board, she does not wish to be reappointed, but said it was a pleasure working with the board members.
So do we wanna wait till next meeting, see if we get some further responses, or?
Uh, you can certainly appoint the people that are here if you'd like, or you can wait on altogether.
On Capitol.
That's confusing for you.
Doesn't matter.
Um, on the, uh, affordable housing committee, the only one has indicated that they wanna stay.
Yes.
How effective i- is a committee with just one person? They can't even hold a meeting.
Correct. Uh, the stormwater management committee, we had one person on it for a year until we were able to recruit a second person.
I think.
That's only a committee of three.
Mike, you, you just indicated you wanted to be on there?
Tracy, Tracy wants to be on it. Is that your punishment, Tracy, for not responding?
Thank you for volunteering, Mike.
Tracy's gonna be on the affordable housing and the stormwater.
I wonder if it would be, on, on the town website, does it speak to the mission and mandate of each of the committees?
Some of them do. Some of them have active pages where it talks about, you know, they have, um, minutes and comments and postings and links and things like that, and others do not have anything. Depends how active the boards.
Does affordable housing have anything? 'Cause I wonder if it'd be helpful for people to know what they're tasked with, so that they knew whether they went to, uh, volunteer or not.
Well, and I'm hoping that that committee especially, um, with the Merrimack Valley Planning Community Needs Assessment, that if residents show up to that, they may wanna get involved. Uh, Merrimack Valley actually told me that a resident, um, who works in a neighboring town, and I don't remember which one, um, has been active with them on behalf of Groveland as well. So I'm hoping, um, I believe it was a woman, so I'm hoping that she maybe wants to participate. Um, but I didn't wanna post seeking, um, people until we knew for sure who was and who was not going to be reappointed, and how many vacancies we would have. But it is always on our website. People wanna volunteer, they can just check the boxes to any boards and committees they're interested in.
I, I do think that was a, that's a great idea, that, uh, to give a rundown on what the committee does, what they do and the responsibilities are.
Yeah, but I think like with affordable housing, I wouldn't know that, and I don't know that Melissa, who's the only re, she's the most recent appointee. I don't know that she would know that.
Do we have any historical correspondence that would show what it is?
I, not since I've been here. Um, I don't know. We don't have a town charter, so if we had a town charter, it would outline what all boards and committees do and what their function is. We don't have that. So I think it's sort of an ad hoc as boards and committees are created. Um, I don't even know how far back this goes. I mean, I could certainly find out what other towns.
Well, it's interesting that there's five members too. It's not like it's a small board.
Right.
It'd be interesting, interesting to know how it came about that there are five members and that type of thing, so.
So do we want to, and it doesn't matter to me, do we wanna vote on the people who are responded and wanna be appointed, or do we wanna wait until we get maybe a final number? Any suggestions from anybody?
The people already said yes, I don't know why you can't cut out through the list and.
Yeah.
Well, there should be more next, next, next meeting anyway.
We can knock off a bunch of them now.
At the next meeting, um, all of the police annual appointments will come over. Um, any other, uh, I think they're the only ones that really make other, 'cause the employees that are up, um, are on here, uh, which has only been, um, the nurse, the health agent, the building inspector have historically been the only annual appointed employees. Um, and Ed, just to follow up on that, I have worked with council. Um, if it was specified in the bylaws, we could make them annual appointed employees anytime if it specifically states that. The only position I was able to find in the bylaws was the town accountant. Um, and her position going forward will be an annual appointment, but only when they become vacant can we put them back on the annual appointment schedule. So as any position, because it really should be the majority of personnel policy employees should be on an annually appointed basis. Um, I know that it was for many positions for a long time, and then somewhere along the line, um, eight or ten years ago, they just stopped doing that. I, I don't know the reason why, but, uh, we will get back on that schedule as vacancies occur.
So if we go through and appoint the people that responded yes, do we have to do them individually?
However you'd like. However you'd like. You could do a page, you could do them individually. It's really up to you guys.
What happened to, uh, Kevin Kunniff on the Capitol? He's been on there for years.
Uh, he's not up. They're three-year terms.
Oh, he's not up, okay.
So I don't know how it ended up that they all have the same and he's a different, um.
He's always been special.
Yes, but he has a different, um, term expiration. So these are only the people that are up, um, June thirtieth.
Gotcha.
So if someone wanna make a motion, if we're going to accept these people who have responded yes, that they wanna be reappointed, either as a page or as a collective?
Well, why don't we, why don't we, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we hold off on those until, uh, the next meeting, and there's no, no how many waiting is don't, don't take effect.
Yet.
So we could hold off on these until the next meeting, and until we get all of them.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
So may I ask, in the meantime, do you want me to try and recruit people for the vacancies? Or do you wanna wait and see where we fall? I mean, I can make it on, you know, the front page of our website and make it more active, um, for these that we have vacancies.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I, I think in the sake of expediency, we have a number of qualified people who have already agreed to be on non-paying, uh, committees and, and boards.
Get them before they change their mind.
Let's do it now, and then we only have half as many to do next week, so we, we, you know, we can, uh, move quite along.
Right. Bill, you ready?
Um, I agree, but I don't wanna do them by page. I'd rather do them individually, 'cause then if someone didn't wanna appoint someone, they don't have to vote for them. You know what I'm saying? If one, one of the members didn't want to.
I think we're gonna get that granular. I mean, we have a lot of vacancies. We think we're gonna get that granular, not to appoint someone to a specific board.
Uh, what are these, uh, I, I see some, uh, listed, for instance, like recreation committee is one pending, uh, going back, oh, actually two recreation committee pending. Um, pending, pending what?
So recreation committee was just, is really the only ones that had pending, because I did not notify them when I sent an email out to everybody else, 'cause I wasn't sure what direction this was gonna take when they met with you all at the last meeting, um, 'cause I know there was some talk about a recreation commission and, um, so they were notified, um, after the last meeting. So pending was just, they haven't had as much time as everybody else to respond.
And then, just up on that same page, um, we've got election constable pending town clerk.
Yes, so the town clerk related items, I, um, there was an email that went around today. Um, there's some confusion on the town clerk, um, positions. Um, the town clerk believes she has the appointing authority, um, but specifically with the registrars, mass general law, with selectmen, or other appointing authority, our bylaws do not state anyone else as the appointing authority, so I left them as pending until those matters are clarified.
Well, it ought to, um, I, I'm just, just looking at this, uh, like the, uh, the board of registrars worked for the town clerk, she should, she should make the recommendation to the selectman. Uh, as, uh, on the second page, the, the health agent and the health nurse, that, that recommendation should come from the, uh, board of health. As does the, uh, police department comes from a recommendation from the police chief. I don't see any other here, but there might be something on this one.
Well, we had a motion on the floor. We have a second. It doesn't matter to Denise how this is done as far as keep a track and clarity, then I, I agree with Selectman O'Neil, that maybe we'll just get them done. The next meeting, we just have the, uh, the rest of the people who are pending. So we have, let's think of.
But if I'm, yeah, so you need to vote on that motion.
Yeah, so let's, uh, have a vote on Selectman Watson's motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? So we get a motion, another motion regarding the appointments?
Make a.
Go ahead.
Shootin' first, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the ones that have said yes are not pending, um, and we can discuss either doing it by the page or individual.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I would say we do it by the page.
If we're gonna do it by the page, um, I would like to only vote on yeses and not any who are pending.
That was the motion.
Okay.
So it's only for yeses, not pending, or no response?
We, we should actually read those out to the for clarity purposes.
Read what out?
Read out.
What's pending?
No, read out, uh, who we're voting on for the yes.
My list?
Yeah, get on the list. Uh, uh, page one, ADA, coordinator, Sam Jawsland, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Affordable Housing Committee, Melissa Kobe. You want me to read them?
You're doing a good job. You're down to two.
Well, we have a motion. So the motion was, did it specify the page, Denise, or?
Um, I, I don't know if that was part of the actual motion, but I mean, I think you could vote them all as a page, as long as if they wanna read them and then just vote the page at a time. You can certainly do that.
So, Bill, can you, you made a motion, right?
Bill did.
Oh, can you, can you modify your mo, your motion to say that we'll read them off?
Yeah, we can go by the page and read them individually, if Ed wants to read them down individually.
Mm-huh.
Um, and then the ones that are gonna say yes, I guess, and the ones that are pending, we're not gonna vote on.
Or we could just go by committee?
Right, well, either way. All right, so all those in favor? And all those opposed? Should I have me to read them?
Ed, Ed, you wanna?
Ed, you wanna read them? You want me to read them?
No, I can read them. Um, ADA coordinator, Sam Jawsland, affordable housing committee, Melissa Kobe, uh, assistant plumbing and gas inspector, Richard K. Danforth, building inspector, Sam Jawsland, burial agent, well, there's no yes on that.
Good.
It's statutory though, so you can do that one.
Ed Watson for cable TV advisory board.
Uh, burial agent, Ian Brody, uh, cable T, uh, cable TV advisory board, uh, Ed Watson, and, um, Tracy Guilford.
No.
Um, capital improvement, Jeff Pappas.
Mr.
Capital improvement, John Osborne. Capital improvement, Steve Crowder. Capital improvement, ex-officio, uh, annual statutory, Denise Dobrowski. Conservation commission, Heather Deggan. Conservation commission, Bill Pomosi. And council on aging. There's no yes on that, but no re, new appointment.
There's actually a letter in your packet that the council on aging recommended her.
Uh, Catherine Felice. Make a motion that we, uh, appoint Groves.
I'll second you.
Any discussion?
I thought we were only going to go down the ones wishes to reappoint.
That's all he did.
No. The burial agent is nothing. It's a blank.
But that's statutory.
Oh, doesn't say that. My bad.
So we did the page one. Am I correct? That's, we did page one?
Yes.
And we voted on it?
Well, there's a motion and a second.
Okay.
For page one, if you want, actually.
All of them in favor?
Yes, yes.
We get a motion for page ten?
I don't think you need to make a motion in advance. I think if he reads the names, that's part of your motion.
All right, Ed, you're up.
I'll make a motion that. I'll make a motion that, uh, we appoint Robert Arcalian, earth removal enforcement officer site inspector, flood plain administrator Sam Jawsland, fortifier warden Chief Robert Lay, health agent Deborah Ketchin, health nurse Anita Wright, historic commission Linda Freel, Mary McValley planning commission alternate Robert Arcalian, open space and trails committee Jennifer, uh,
Kathy?
Cadigan, open space and trails committee Michael Cordero, open space and trails committee Michael Davis. Is that the one you wanted, Mike? Gas and plumbing inspector Gerald Vines, recreation committee Felice Hunt, recreation committee Daniel Stewart, recreation committee Chi Condon.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Assuming there's no further discussion.
Why don't we make the same exception with the health and agent and nurse that we're gonna make the others pending recommendation from the board of health? We should be consistent with what we do. If we're gonna wait to hear from- I didn't see it either, but I wasn't the one that brought it up, but now that he, Selectman Watson did, it sounds like a pretty good idea.
Well, I did, I did bring it up, but I think the motion was to approve those all of the yes.
Are you asking why it's not pending and it's yes?
I think he's suggesting that we withhold those and get a recommendation from the board that oversees each of those positions.
So we're consistent with what we do, what, what we did with the town clerk, what we're gonna do with, suggested what we should do with the police and what was suggested we should do with the health agents. We should be consistent across the board with everything. So we should vacate those two for the, for the time being. Till we get a recommendation from those folks.
Do we have a full health board, Rick?
We do now. Um, I don't know, they have a meeting the end of this month, I don't know that they, actually they have a meeting on the 22nd, I think, Thursday, the 22nd. I don't know that they've met or reorganized this year.
All we need on that, if we want, I, just a letter from the chairman. But I'll, I'll amend it to-
Page two. Is that easy to do, Heather?
Yeah, I can email the chair.
Okay. Any further discussion, Bill?
No, no, I just want consistency, that's all.
All those in favor? Page three?
Page three. Recreation committee Michael Hooton, white to no officer Robert Lay, superintendent of pest control Mark Parento, town council KP Law, veterans agent Michael Ingham, wire inspector Albert Elsievee, zoning enforcement officer Sam Jawsland, finance board James Scanlon, three-year term, finance board Teresa Dunn.
I'm gonna sustain on that one.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna sustain on that one.
Okay. Uh, finance board Joe Demore, one-year term, finance board Ruth Revad, three-year term, finance board Kathleen Castrenales, two-year term, finance director doesn't wish to be reappointed.
You've already done my contract, but yes, you need to appoint as a final.
We get a letter of appointment.
Did you have a return any of them again?
Yes, my signed contract.
You can give us a verbal like Tracy did.
Yeah.
Uh, can I comment on the finance board?
Yeah.
So, um, if you recall at town meeting, we passed a bylaw to reorganize the finance board down from nine members to seven. So all members need to be reappointed. So I met with them last week and all what I did was anyone who was expiring, normally June 30th of this year got a three-year term because they would normally be up for a full reappointment. And then those that were up two years from now got the three-year, those that were up in one year got a two-year. And then you'll see, Joe Demore, he was on the fence, but he decided he, he'll stay on as a one-year appointment until they can get two additional members so that we can maintain a quorum in the interim.
So we need to get Andy Wild and Ashlyn Daniels?
Yeah, I will say so, Andy Wild did not attend any meetings at all this past year. He is unable to make Monday, uh, Wednesday night meetings and that's the meeting that finance now meets. So it's unlikely that he would be reappointed. Or seek reappointment.
Ashlyn?
Ashlyn we have not heard from, she did not come to our last few meetings. So Kathy was reaching out to her as well.
Could I ask a, oops, sorry. Could I ask a question about town council? So is KP, is that coperman and pageant changed their name?
Yes, correct.
So has the board ever looked at, ever looked to see whether what we're getting for services there? Have we explored other options for the town council?
Uh, not since I've been here, no. I mean, I can tell you KP, KP is actually one of the largest municipal law firms in Massachusetts. They represent a very large number of municipalities.
I think you pay them a water amount.
Oh, we do, I mean, and, you know, I have looked at, you know, the communities that have brought council in-house and what they're paying for in-house council, you know, they're paying obviously a significant amount to have an attorney on staff. We could certainly look at other arrangements with KP and see if there's a, another type of agreement that we could enter into with them instead of an hourly basis. But they really would be the best out there that I know of.
Would they do retainers?
They may. I know in a prior community, they renegotiated their, the way the contract-
But that, Bill, is totally dependent on how much we request their assistance either for lawsuits or someone else's issue that's more than that, so.
Well, it's that, but it's also how, how they manage whatever the issues are. So some people might manage it with a brief response, some people might manage it with, you know, they're requiring more time. Do you know, I'd be interested to know whether the surrounding has? I'd just be interested to explore, not to say that it's not the best choice, but at least explore what other towns are doing, like is Westbury very, do they use KP, you know, Mary Mac?
Yeah.
Because, you know, is there a potential to do a share with another town? That really has, you know, part-time councils, you know, that's similar to what we do with the health agent or some of the specialized things, you know?
Yeah, I do know that the communities that have in-house councils still have another firm for specialized issues because you're not gonna find one that's specialized in everything because we have such bizarre cases in the municipal side. So either they'll have like a separate labor attorney or they'll have a separate land use attorney. But I can certainly reach out and see who our area towns are using.
So I guess I'm coming from the place of, I, for as long as I've been here, we've used them and I would just like to do some due diligence to know about what we're getting, you know?
Potentially, yeah.
Exactly. And, you know, maybe it is, and then we say, look, we looked into that and it's reasonable and we're gonna continue to do that.
Yeah, I could say, I mean, one of the biggest benefits we get from them is Attorney Hewitt has been with Groveland pretty much since the beginning that they've used KP Law. So he has all historical knowledge. You know, he knows what happened at what town meeting, when, what the minutes, who stood up. I will say that's a big benefit that we do get is that they are so familiar with Groveland. But I can certainly reach around and, you know, see who's using what and what they're paying.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would guess, I would like to see if we're comparable town size, you know, how much other towns spend?
Well, that I know because I did that survey during budget season and they're all spending well over a hundred thousand. We were at the low end and I can actually forward you the emails that I got from communities that, and some of them were, you know, that on top of like, again, a separate either labor council or land use attorney. But I did do a survey on that in the winter time.
Did we get a second on that?
No.
We just got a motion to appoint all the yeses on page three, can we get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, anybody?
I'm just gonna sustain from Tricia Bell.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Bill sustains.
Well, all the town clerk is in the room, maybe we can get the clear, clear up, uh, the pending, uh, drop the town clerk.
Would that be an agenda item, please?
That's up to you guys, it's up to you.
Do you want to speak?
I, I just wanna hear where, um, where they're going with one of the people that was-
So you go up to the podium.
So I think, I think what the group said was we were taking input from you as to what your appointing sheet did. So we didn't make any decisions on, on the court appointment for written three, four, five, as we do with other town committees for the appointments that they have set.
I've had sent the selectmen, the three regissha names and the two constable names. Who emailed?
Could you forward that to me because I didn't have it for the list, please?
No, that was on late this afternoon. It was just their names.
No, no, I just said, could you forward it to me so I can add it to the list? So I can give it to them on the next- Yes, I'll just put it on the next agenda. Okay.
All right.
So I will act of-
How about, uh, Dave, Dave Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
She's looking something, we just want to-
All right. Thank you.
So I will post the vacancies on our website and see if we can get any interest between now and next meeting.
Okay.
And then I will clean this up and just have those that were not appointed tonight on your list for next meeting.
I sent you the email, Ed, see how that-
Thank you.
Uh, going back to old business, I know it was a pretty good discussion on the Bagnell school, so if we want to open that up for a few more minutes. I have a feeling that that's gonna turn into an agenda item for next meeting, but, Bill, did you cover everything you wanted to talk about?
So, um, about a week or so ago, I had gone down to check on the fields and I wasn't happy with the way they were growing and they looked. So Denise had re-emailed the company that did the grass seeding and stated that I wasn't happy and that I was a landscaper and what have you. They came back last Monday, they sliced seeded and fertilized the fields again. And the reason, gentleman said, and I have the emails here, all the documents. And it has, it's a true statement, it's been rainy, it's been cold, we haven't had a lot of sun, we've only had a couple sunny days and it's growing slow. Good lawns, established lawns will grow good in the, uh, in the cool weather and the, in the rain where seed lawns won't. So that's been taken care of, they've been back, they re, they re-sliced seeded and fertilized it. I really don't know what other to say in the meeting I had with the people the other day. I kind of went over that briefly with you, I'm not gonna sit here and take the whole night up with it. Like, I think it seems to me like some people on this board have what they want to say, it sounds like. But, you know, I'll leave it to whatever if someone wants to say yet at this point.
Yeah, I will say that, um, that field's been a disaster for forty years, thirty years. So we've really only been working on it since November, October?
Uh, October, no, the irrigation system was the first step that went in in October.
Right. And we couldn't seed it in the fall because it was November and it was too late for seeding.
Right, and then, I mean, I've had my, my yard done, reseeded and hydroseeded and leveled and stuff. It's also taken a while to grow longer than it has because of the forty-degree weather and all the rain and the, the issues with that. So I can understand why the, the back field hasn't been growing, but they have come back and fixed some of the issues.
We have all the emails, all the documents right here, all responding, saying the data.
I think we have, uh, at least when I saw the extended forecast, we have a couple weeks of sun and some rain coming in.
And unfortunately, it takes a year to get grass to come in. Grass is not something that's gonna be done, you didn't plant sod, it's grass, it's gonna take a good eight months to a year to come in and come in full. And it's gonna have to be fertilized, it's gonna have to be cared for and to get it to come in. I can say that I was there this morning, or afternoon this morning, I was there at quarter one this afternoon with the sprinkler company because I was down there yesterday with this group of people. I noticed there was some, um, around the wellhead, there was some bubbling out, it looked like to me. So Denise had called the sprinkler guy and said, can you meet Bill down there? And we're down there quarter one, and his end of the sprinklers, I saw them run, I asked him, turn the sprinklers on, they're running, the fields were wet. We walked out there, we checked them. The well people need to come back and adjust the backflow preventer valve. It's, um, it has a little blow-by, it's not stopping the system from running. If it was adjusted better, they can get better pressure. So I think Denise had told me that you've made that call and they're coming out in the next day or two to take a look at that.
Correct.
But that's not gonna stop this, if you walk down there yourself and go down there, it's wet, everything's get, it's watered. It comes on at eight o'clock at night and it's sixteen, you know, sixteen zones. It runs for thirty minutes a zone and they shut off at six o'clock in the morning. And the reason we're doing that is because you have to keep the stuff, when the kids are down there playing, you can't have the sprinklers running during the day. So we do it at night. And everything's in and running and, um, I don't know if the-
So any idea why they didn't hydroseed that, why, why it was, uh?
It was hydroseeded.
It was hydroseeded?
It wasn't hydroseeded, it was, um, sliced seeded in the beginning.
It says that it was hydroseeded and it cost forty-two, forty-two hundred fifty dollars to have prescription turf.
That was when, um, they came out and hydroseeded, but then it was that cold stretch and nothing but rain. And he said, just, just, just doesn't take in that type of weather. If we did sod, we'd have a much higher investment, but stuff like that would have taken. So that's why he came back out and sliced seeded it because the hydroseeding didn't take in the weather that we had.
Any idea, any deal what type of seed they used on it?
I was told they used a ballfield mix.
Certainly, certainly, uh, that would, that would be appropriate, certainly, what grass seed mixture they use on your, on your house would be appropriate for, for, uh, one of the- Did they, with their paperwork, did they give a list of, uh, what type of seed they used on that, or?
I didn't get involved in that anymore.
Yeah, I can start with it, they always give me a, um, a write-up when they're on site. So it's the same company that maintains the pines in those fields. It's prescriptions turf and they are like a sports-
So it takes traffic and, and stuff?
Sports, whatever, lawn company. And so I know the question came up too about weeds. So part of the issue is under the Child and Families Protection Act, you cannot use herbicides during school year. So, we were not aware that there was gonna be a six-day delay between school ending and the summer program starting. So now the fact that he just sliced seeded, they cannot use the pesticides until August when the current grass seed has a chance to germinate. He said about ten to twelve weeks is what it will take before they can then treat the weeds with the appropriate chemicals necessary to treat it.
So I have two questions because the town board on this hundred and twenty thousand dollars back in two thousand fifteen, so we're now two years into, still not having it resolved?
It wasn't two thousand and fifteen, it was last, two thousand and sixteen, I think, town meeting, they moved the money. Or they put it into the Bagnell lawn and grounds account.
I think we had to wait to move it to town meeting and then it was moved over to the right account so we could actually have access to it.
There was a proposal by, there was a couple proposals that took longer to-
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, there's a bidding process, so we had to go up to bid on the well. We went up to bid twice on an irrigation system and then we ended up buying the parts directly and hiring someone to install it because we couldn't get a company to bid under a ridiculous amount of money to actually do the full install. So those two components took several months between the time we could get the well installed and the irrigation system.
So I know that we received correspondence from Jim Day and I'd like to propose that we put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Because I don't think, because it's not been shared today, it's something that we can discuss. But the consensus that I've heard from people is, um, Mr. Day has made, you know, some comments and I think that he has a very significant investment in the use of that field. You know, they're having field day tomorrow and for the second or third year, they have no place to have field day. And for the kids, that's a really big deal, looking at the year and can they keep using that space? So I think that in that email correspondence, he makes some proposals that I think this board should consider and, and look at. So again, I would propose that we meet in the agenda.
The only thing I will say, and I know Bill mentioned it earlier, as part of the discussion at town meeting when the money was moved, we did talk about paving that side parking lot with the remaining Bagnell funds, so- So, um, in Jim's email, he referred to the remaining funds and putting it in a maintenance account. So we won't actually know what's remaining until we decide if we're going to move forward with that paving, because that was part of the overall discussion.
And I don't think we should get into moving any money or having a discussion until the project's completed. Because I was, I was an advocate to try and keep the money and save the money. I went down there and volunteered a whole Saturday with the prisoners to, to spread those wood chips. The highway department donated half of them, I donated forty yards of them, I went down with my machine, I spread it with the prisoners and what have you, um, to try and save money, to keep the money so we wouldn't spend it all, to have money to do, you know, the, the paving and what have you. But the project's not done, and now we're talking about possibly putting money into a maintenance account. And these people, in the very beginning, this has been going on, as you guys just stated, it's not three years, it's, I believe we started it last June. Um, this project's been going on, no one had, no one wanted to volunteer, no one wanted to come out. I went down there, rode a till, my rode a till myself, I did a lot of the work, what have you. Everyone's going to come out, you know, they're going to criticize Bill for what this project turned out to be, it's taking longer. But I was in a meeting with these people at five o'clock Sunday afternoon, and the people were stating they haven't been on that grass in thirty years. So I don't know what the proposal is to try and get grass to grow this year, I don't know what that proposal is, but that's what I want to hear. If it's going to be an agenda item, I want the person to come in here and give us a proposal to get the grass to grow faster. That's what the issue is, and that's how I feel.
You, you mean, you want the, you want the company to come in?
I want the person that's saying that the, the project's not going right. The company has, we've been having emails back and forth with this company, it's going to take, and we've never told the summer program they can get on it this soon, we never told anyone. If you remember in our past meetings, we said, the fence is up until the grass comes in, we're not going to be going on those fields, until it's done right, we said it. I mean, I.
Just a, a, a question, and I'm, I'm going to refer to, uh, I'm sorry, did I, I'm going to refer to the, uh, public hearing that we just had, um, and it had, naturally, I probably not going to find it, but there was, there was a, uh, uh, under, under number seven, uh, yeah, rye grass should be seeded, uh, on this re-loaned area at the rate of two hundred pounds per acre. Do, do we, do we know what, uh, the seed that, uh, what was the rate, was it in there, was it in the, uh, in, in the bid that went out so much seed per acre? Uh, did they put enough in there? Uh, did, did we specify, uh, where originally the, uh, the hydroseeding didn't work? Uh, so it was, uh, it, it was, uh, what do you call it, uh, uh?
Split-seeding, yeah.
Sliced, uh, when I looked at it, it looked like it was only sliced seeded in one, one direction, I don't think that's enough. I think it should have been at least a minimum.
So do we have someone?
But any idea what, what we, uh, did, was it in the contract, how much seed per acre, uh, or, uh, per, uh, square foot area?
No, so this was only a couple thousand dollars, we didn't go out to bid, or, we just used the company that maintains the pines, because that's what their specialty is, is maintaining the fields.
So what does, um, what does the next selectment meeting look like for an agenda?
So the, um, we have police appointments, and we have, um, Powers and Sullivan, our auditors, coming in to go over the fiscal sixteen audit report, um, and then the annual appointments. So those are the, um, only major items I can think of right now that's on it.
So we can carve out a half hour for this, if these.
Sure.
Can I just, can I ask, ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have any proof that the right amount of seed wasn't put down, and do we have proof that the two-directional seeding wasn't done, and do we have all this proof that the people are?
Well, I was going to ask you, how do you tell, I'm not a landscaper, so I don't know, how do you tell if it's been cross-sliced?
You have to stand there, when the guy put the material on his machine, to make sure it was done. Like, I didn't stand there, no, I mean, I can tell you this, I stood there today.
Count the seeds.
Count the seeds.
But you, you can go down there today, and you can stand there, and you can see with a sliced seed, and you can see the rocks in the soil.
Yeah, but can you tell that it was?
You could see the seed.
I mean, do you tell it's been sliced seeded and cross-sliced seeded? I haven't.
Uh, it looked to me like it was one direction, but I didn't stand down on my hands and knees, I didn't get involved and tell them to come sliced seeded, but, um.
I mean, I will.
You seed there, there's definitely seed there.
And I will say, the company, I mean, they have been great, he goes on his own and checks, he comes back and will say, you know, he's the one who's been giving us updates. Um, it's not germinating, it's not growing the right way, it's been so cold, it's, I mean, I don't know any of that stuff. So he has been going, and he has been, you know, because he's concerned too, because he knows what it was like when he first got there. Um, and the same thing, he gave, he sent me that, um, children and.
When was, when was this sliced seeded?
Last Monday.
This has been a week?
Yeah, so he said we should see.
Takes fourteen, twenty-one days.
Yeah, we should see something within a few weeks, but it'll take ten to twelve weeks to fully.
Yeah, because even my yard, after it was.
No, but now we're just trying to do something, so, yeah, he sent me the protection of children and.
It doesn't matter if there's a sprinkler system, it's still going to come in.
Right.
If it was a dry and no sprinkler system, it's not the right time of year, but when you have sprinklers. I'm just going to read one of his lines, "Hi Denise, spring seeding has been slow to respond this spring. There certainly has been plenty of rain, but low soil temperatures are hindering the germination. I will look at the Bagnell School this morning, and it will look, it will most likely need reseeding, I will get back to you." He gets back to Denise, "Mostly just perennial graya is there now, no bluegrass. As far as I can see, I will get it, it, it onto my schedule for a reseeding next week. Lots of crabgrass is coming up, I will be, it will be a problem, but it will not be able to be addressed with a herbicide until August. If it was, in, in, no, no school property, it would be ideal to spray. For now, we will reseed. Did you, we did apply starter fertilizer, but, um, not much response yet due to weather. I will get more fertilization into the program for you. And do not hesitate to mow as needed, thank you, David."
So, are we paying every time we seed, or is there some type of, so, there's some type of kind of guarantee that?
Yes, so because the fields were in such poor condition, um, you know, as he said to me, there are no guarantees, but he will do his best to get it to grow. So he has not charged us for the sliced seeding, we're not paying for that, that was part of the initial seeding that didn't take. Um, and like I said, I, I will say he is, I mean, they are good like that, whenever we need anything, I mean, he does go right out there. And so I was saying, he sent me that full protection of children and families from harmful pesticides, national general law, chapter one thirty-two, to talk about why they can't use the pesticides during the school year. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't know these things, though, um.
Well, they can't, they can't use certain pesticides, I think they can use organic type, but they can't use.
Right, but I think what they need for the specific crabgrass, he said, is more toxic, or however you word it. Um, and that's why he would prefer to wait, because it's not on the approved school pesticide list.
On June fifth, um, David Gasper, we are now, um, heading out to sliced seed Bagnell School today.
Still the week ago. So even hydroseeding at my house, with the weather, took longer than a week and a half to two weeks to even start to grow.
If you don't, if you do not have soil temperature between fifty and sixty-five degrees, it's going to take longer to germinate. Sixty-five to seventy degrees, you can go grass seed to germinate in five to seven days. Under that temperature, it's going to take fifteen, you know, fourteen to twenty-one days, and the colder it gets, slower it gets.
So what role does the quality of the loan play? Because it doesn't look like we spent a lot of money on loan, and my understanding, again, from some parents, is that there's a lot of glass, and that it's very packed down.
Well, I'm a heavy person, and I was out there today, and I walked across it, because some of those people that were with me at five o'clock last night said it was packed down. I walked out there today, and I'm a heavy person, and I left footprints in it, so it's not that packed down. And number two, we hauled in, the highway department donated it, we hauled in over three hundred yards of compost that was spread out with doses back in June. It was spread, because it's very soily material, it's very sandy material, it drains very fast, so the compost was put in there for the organics, to slow it down and to put organics in. And it was spread, it was, um, dozed, it was power raped, and then we did add mow on top of that.
Was it screened as well?
There was screen mow that was put on, yes. Do I need to sit here all night and explain what went on? I mean, I don't know if this is really being proactive, I think proactive is, um, are we on an efficient expedition to go at Bill, I don't get it.
Well, I think that when there's a lot of parents reaching out to me and asking me about it, I feel like I need to.
I wish you were at the meeting, you know, if they were all the parents, I would have loved to have you there.
Well, there might have been an issue of a quorum and open meeting.
Well, two people, there wouldn't have been a quorum.
All right, all right. So let's, uh, Bill, do you have anything?
I, I do recall that, you know, when we first started this project, there was an outside chance, there was, we were hopeful that it would all be in by the summertime, for the summer program. We were hopeful.
Right.
But for that to happen, we had to have a lot of things fall into place just right. And when the well got delayed in the irrigation, really, you put everything back a couple of months, which is beyond the control of anybody. Then the, with the lousy spring we had, um, i- it's, I know what you must be going through, my, my tomato plants haven't moved an inch in a month. Um, it's just some brutal weather out there. Um, I, I know Bill has put his heart and soul into this project, and is doing the best he can. I know I've worked with, um, prescription turf in the past, they've done, they've taken care of Washington Park for years. And they, they really do a great job, they have a solid reputation throughout the industry. Um, I, I just think we just need to ask people to be a little patient with doing the best we can.
I mean, it's been thirty-something years, so, wait another few weeks to see what we get, but.
I, I don't know why we can't be, as a board, proactive to get the grass to grow, and, and be proactive to, to come to the solutions. Why do we need to dig up dirt, and try to dig up dirt, and dig up dirt, you know, something? This is the reason why people don't want to volunteer and grow, is because this kind of stuff happens. You know, I didn't get paid to do the job, I, I was a volunteer that went down there and did it, but seems like I got paid, I don't get, I don't really get it. I know I won't volunteer for this town again.
I, I, I want to say personally, I, I appreciate the, the, the work you've done on your own volunteer. Um, you've put up a lot of your time and money, um, to, to work on this project. It hasn't worked out the way we all had it planned on the board, but seldom in life do things work out exactly the way we have them planned on the board. Um, well, we're dealing with the elements, we're dealing with weather, which is just an even more difficult variable to, to, to deal with, um.
So maybe what we.
I think that the, uh.
Maybe what we do is we, um, pass on the next meeting, we'll give the back a couple weeks extra, three more weeks to see what happens back there. And then after that, you know, if there's still questions, or it's not working, or the turf management people can't seem to come up with an answer to why it's not growing, then maybe we put it on the following agenda.
I think the other issue, though, that's raised is the ongoing maintenance, do we have a plan for that?
What was the, uh?
Highway department's going to mow it.
Yes, so it would be part of, it's part of my lawn and grounds budget, to maintain those backfields with the ongoing fertilizer, and then the highway was going to mow the grass.
Okay.
And I, I think the question that, that the board is asking is, so that we can get back to the constituents, I'm sure that there isn't anybody on the board that hasn't got questions about what happened down there. And I, I, I think we're just looking to, to get some answers, so that we can get back to the people that are concerned, the people that have asked questions, and see if we can get some answers for them. And I, I think that that's part of our job.
I was there at five o'clock yesterday answering answers, so I did my part. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't shove the people and did not get back to them, I was there. They asked me, can I come, I met them.
I think unfortunately, that, and this is not going to be very popular for me to say, but unfortunately, if we looked at the code of ethics, nobody on the board of selectmen should have been involved in overseeing that, even if it was on volunteer basis. Because it's, what the, what it says is that if there's any appearance of a conflict of interest, that that person shouldn't be doing it. So I don't negate anything that Mr. Dunn did, because I know that he did it with good intentions, but it creates a dilemma for him, that now he feels questioned, when really that wasn't the role that he should have had to play.
It wasn't just his decision, though, it was the board's decision.
Well, if you look at what the ethics guidelines, guidelines say.
But the board voted for it.
Every single meeting, I have come in, and I have sat here on camera, and I have told the town people throughout that whole project what's going on. I brought them up to date throughout the whole project. And then if it's an ethics issue, it's an ethics issue, I don't know if I tell you. Everyone here knew what was going on, so maybe we should have the town council, uh, check into that.
Well, in all fairness too, I mean, it was similar to the pines project, where nobody seemed to want to step up to the plate and take ownership of the project. So either the project died from lack of interest, or Bill took it on himself and said, you know, I'll try to push the ball across the, uh.
It ended up that Bill did it, because no one wanted to come out and get involved.
Well, I think there was another proposal, but it was more money.
Lot more money, yes.
Oh, 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 yes, yeah, with the soccer fields, that proposal? I remember that one, that was, uh, near four hundred thousand dollars.
And if you remember, I met with the, I met with the superintendent, I met with the principal, I met with Denise, me, we had a meeting. Before anything took place, we got their wish list, what they wanted, they wanted a certain wish list, they wanted to tie it into their guidance. We met, we had all those meetings, and, and it ended up, we listened to what they wanted, and we did what they wanted. And it's not really Bill's project, it's the town of Groveland. Denise is the finance director, she's who pays the bills, Bill don't pay the bills, I don't talk to the contractors that were down there working. I went down there, it was a problem today, it, I took time out of my day to get down there with the well, I wanted to make sure the wells were working, that's all Bill's doing. I'm not going in and negotiating contracts, I'm not going in and meeting with contractors and, and, and having these, you know, private meetings. I'm going down there and being the laser, make sure the sprinklers work, uh, make sure this got done, make sure that got done. There's a problem, it's not growing. Can you imagine right now if Bill didn't get down there and call Denise and say, hey, guess what, Denise, the lawns aren't growing, let's get on this? Who would have done it? Nobody. So whatever you guys are going to do, you got to do, but.
Well, like I said, that, you know, I'm not a.
You know, call town council and see if it's, see if it's a, uh, if it's an ethics issue, I don't really care.
I'm not a landscaper, and I'm not a police officer, and I'm not a water commissioner, I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert in any of those fields, so I defer to people who do that as a living or are in that field, so.
Right. People watching this right now are going to sit there and they're going to say, you know something? I'm not going to volunteer for this town going, look what he's going through, that's what's going to happen. It's going to go right back the way we were, no one's going to want to volunteer, people are going to get fed up, and we're going to be right back where we were again.
Let's, um, let's give it a few more weeks.
I think it's a good idea.
Let's see what happens, and then the following, the next BOs meeting, the following BOs meeting, we'll see about an agenda item.
So the July tenth meeting, you want to, I just want to get back to, um, Jim Day and his email.
Yeah, yeah, let's do July tenth.
Have Jim Day call me if he wants, I'll talk to him directly.
Because I'm not doing this on my birthday.
I have no problem, I'll do it here in town hall, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I talked to Jim.
I think it should be in front of, in an open meeting.
All right, so let's get a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-eight.
Motion to adjourn at eight thirty-eight?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Don't forget, there's tons of stuff to be said.
Yeah, thanks.